Yes. Mayor Sue McNamara?
Here.
Brock McDonald?
Here.
Greg Vagosian?
Here.
Andrew Lowe?
Here.
Josh Schwade?
Here.
Lynn Midyette?
Here.
And Honora Schiller?
Yes.
We have a call, Mayor.
Good. You join me in stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can hear that. Okay. We have an agenda, and I believe there may be a slight adjustment to it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we amend Agenda Item 9A to read, discuss, approve, P and Z and Board of Adjustment member David Graeble and Kim Cosman.
Second?
If I could just kind of amend that a little bit, Kim Cosman is for Architectural Review Board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we didn't tell you that.
Well, yeah, let's, you want to make a new?
Yes, since she's not here?
What order do you want to do it in?
Since she's not here, you want to go G?
Number two.
Yeah, we could do that.
So, I'm sorry, what's the amended motion? I didn't hear.
Oh, just exactly what you said, except instead of P and Z and Board of Adjustment, it would be for Architectural Review Board.
Okay.
I will go ahead and second that.
Voice?
Aye.
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Let's pass. Okay, Michelle, will you read the minutes, please?
Well, would everyone like those waived?
Yes.
Me reading them? Do we have a motion for approving them?
We'll read through the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Grayden? Second.
I second.
Lynn? Moved and seconded. Minutes are waived.
All aye for round approval.
Sorry. Please, ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Motion's passed. Thank you. So, remarks, petitions, and complaints. Does anyone in the audience care to make any comments, remarks, petitions, complaints?
About that subject or any subject?
It would be pretty much any subject, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Mostly about FAR 150.
Will you please identify yourself?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Elan Klosterhoff, Ten Clarkson Farm.
Okay.
About FAR 150 and the amount of aircraft that are low-flying over our houses that have just seemed to increase, and they're big aircraft. I understood the FAR was, and I think you did the research on this, Honorelle, that they're not supposed to be doing that. Now, I'm not talking about Air Force, I'm not talking about police, I'm not talking about search helicopters, anything like that.
You're talking about civilian air?
Yes, civilian aircraft and recreational aircraft, and not drones for real estate purposes or land surveying, but we've had a marked increase in the amount of aircraft.
Okay.
And I don't know what can or cannot be done about that, or possibly a reminder to who is it, the manager of Aircraft Results, and that, yes.
Okay.
That's all.
We'll inquire if there are any limitations that they're subject to, and, yeah, the planes keep getting bigger and bigger, but they're?
Yes.
They're biz jets, so they just keep getting?
Yeah, they're not like King Airs, and they're, they are like 737s and?
I haven't seen those.
Oh, today, there was one today and one yesterday.
But I don't know that those are coming out of Spirit. I'm not sure?
They are because of how low they are. If they're coming out of Lambert, they're farther north.
Generally speaking, yes.
Yes, they are farther north, and if they do invent or south, then they're usually not within the boundaries of Clarkson Valley, it's more toward Baldwin.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
These are not commercial aircraft?
Yeah, they are commercial aircraft out of Spirit.
Okay.
I know we've, I've flown over the city on a commercial aircraft, but, I mean, flown right over the house, but we've been coming out of Lambert. As I said, I'm unaware of any large commercial aircraft that uses Spirit as an FOB, but I may be wrong.
They're down there. We have a resident in Clarkson Farm that is the owner of Cammy, Corporate Aircraft Management down there, and they do service the 737s?
Okay.
And those other jets taking out of Spirit. I mean, we sort of have like an inside person that can validate the fact that there are passenger aircraft that are coming out of there.
Okay.
At the conversation with Gary.
We'll ask?
Yeah, it might be helpful if you notice either a louder aircraft or a larger aircraft, just make note of it.
The time, the date?
Certainly.
Yeah, send it to us, and we can use that.
Well, I think they also have, on their website, Spirit, that you can make comments. There isn't any regulations against them flying out of Spirit.
No, I didn't think there were.
No, there aren't.
But isn't there a noise, a noise abatement office number, and the old number that I used to have was 532-2222, and you could call up and talk to Airport Operations down there? And I didn't know if anybody else had made a comment or anything about that lately, but it's just gotten a lot more frequent this year.
Yeah, I saw the one fly over today and heard it, but?
And it was large aircraft.
Right.
Honora, you may know, don't we have, doesn't Spirit, since you did the work on it, doesn't Spirit have certain hours during which they can and can't fly out?
No, they have another, they have a different runway that they can use at certain times, but, and they also have it so that they don't run up their engines at certain times, but other than that, no, like, anyone can fly out of there?
Military or civilian?
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. Okay, so, I don't, yeah, anyone else? Nope. Lieutenant, would you care to read your police report?
Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
From the law enforcement standpoint, the month's arrival was rather uneventful, which is always a welcome sight. We had 58 radio calls for service, we had self-initiated calls, officers struggling themselves at 82. We had three crimes or incidents that actually occurred throughout the month, I'll comment on those a little bit later. We had 19 verbal alarms occurred, all of which were false alarms. We had no open doors that were found. We did have 28 garage doors that were left open throughout the night, and we left reminders with folks in their mailboxes there, too. We had no motor vehicle accidents this month of any kind, whether injury or non-injury, and we issued 50 moving traffic citations, four non-moving traffic citations, 30 warnings, and there were no parking violations, for a total of 49 traffic enforcement actions. And there were no arrests. As far as incidents to report, we had a resident on Blue Rowne who left a smoking lung in the fireplace and then left the home and filled the house with smoke and set the fire alarm off, so the fire department had to come and vent the house, and there was a little bit of smoke damage in there, but lovely that got to it before the fire actually started. Had a student up at Marquette who was practicing, I believe it was football, left his wallet on the sidelines, and when he came back, his driver's license and a few other cards were gone from it. We'll investigate that. And we had a youngster who lives on Curbs Brook who unfortunately had a mental health crisis, and our officers and emergency medical services responded and conveyed him to Children's Hospital for evaluation and treatment. That's it. That's it for this month. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Does Mercy have an explanation for all their false alarms?
I could tell you where it is. They dial eight, and then when they dial nine, again, they end up hitting 911, just because of the number that you're trying to dial. They have to get outside lines, and that, once they hit that second one, it goes immediately to communications, and they think they're still dialing the right number, and then they hear somebody on the other end hang up, and we get dispatched. So, that's what it's about.
So, it'd be better if they didn't hang up?
Yeah, if somebody just doesn't hang up and just tells us that it's not an emergency, we're still going to get dispatched because we have to go verify that nothing's going on, because there's been some occasions where we didn't get dispatched and something was going on under duress, so.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Great.
Looking for status reports from the aldermen. Lynn, would you care to start?
I don't have anything to report.
Mr. Vagosian, since you've been absent for so long physically, would you care to say anything in public, personally?
I see Valerie is here. Can you explain what the error was and the repair of the concrete on the actress system for cells?
Oh, yes, it was called human error. They decided they started on the wrong entrance.
Was that entrance not to be broken up?
That entrance was not to be broken up.
Are they absorbing that cost?
Of course, of course.
They went to the north entrance instead of the south entrance?
Started the north entrance, and it was not even in the contract.
Jeez.
So, we're outwardly regarding work on the south entrance.
Been there, done that, so.
That's it.
Thank you. Brock?
Nothing for me today.
Andrew?
Sure, I will chime in since Brock decided not to. I want to say thanks to him and for everyone who helped out. We are, for the very first time, broadcasting this meeting on YouTube, and our projecting video that will be recorded and available for everyone. So, thanks, Brock, and I'm really excited with the support from everyone up here, and we made some good progress. One other note, two things actually that are related. Our current website hosting company sent a note this week saying they're no longer going to provide hosting services. That is, that's okay, that's not the end of the world. Brock and I are already evaluating the website and everything like that. So, they've given us till the end of the calendar year. I'm not even sure that we need that before we make a switch to something else. That is also related to the email addresses, which, I'm sorry, has taken so long, all that, all that stuff and the hosting services related. So, we're going to try and get that sorted out as well as get the emails up and running for everybody. So, that is it from the Technology Committee. Thanks.
Will that happen when you switch hosts?
We should be able to get the emails going before we have to mess with the website, but it is, there's some overlap there about the, on the backend of, it's related. They got to tie in together. Thanks.
Thank you. And just an aside, I want to say how much?
We all appreciate the effort you guys have put into this. It's been great.
Yeah, I'm looking at Brock now. He's alderman slash IT guy slash, you know, host, so, thanks, man.
Okay, Honora, excuse me, you are sitting back, and I skipped over you. I didn't see, Honora?
Yeah.
I didn't see you.
No, I don't have any comments, except for the fact that, how many people have applied for the building commissioner position?
To date, effectively, no one. We've identified one candidate, but no one has actually formally applied.
So, we're having a closed meeting to discuss that. If we only have one candidate, do we really have to have a special meeting? Can't we meet tonight?
One of the things, well, that's up to you. All I was open to meeting after this meeting, because one of the things we need to identify is what we're going to pay them, and we generally do that in a closed meeting, and I was under the impression that the majority of people preferred tomorrow rather than tonight.
I think two people said tonight, and one person said they didn't care, two people said Wednesday or Thursday, and I don't know what, I don't know what you said.
Well, I think?
Oh, I said tomorrow.
I think at least three people said tomorrow, and so, that kind of puts it?
Okay. My other thing is, the discussion of a city administrator?
Mm-hmm.
Is not a closed subject. It's an open meeting subject, because it's not a personnel issue, it's a position issue, a change of ordinance, and so that is an open meeting discussion.
And I would defer to Patrick for that.
Well, it's a discussion of a current employee, that you may or may not be changing the current employee's job, title, role, conditions of her employment. I believe that the minority has nature of discussion about an existing employee taking on additional duties, so that would be subject to close of the board votes that way.
Excuse me, we're not really discussing Michelle, because we've already discussed her, we've given her a salary increase. What we're discussing is, is this a city clerk position, or is it a city administrator position? So, do we want to change our ordinance, and what is the job description for this person to change the ordinance? I think that's an open meeting that anyone can hear.
I know we had this discussion before and during, during a closed meeting, and it did impact directly the city clerk's position in whether or not, I mean, the fact that all this details the discussion of the duties of an existing employee, unless you're not going to make any reference to what Michelle does or does not do. I mean, so, I would?
No one's complaining about Michelle. I think the thing is, is what is the position?
And I feel like we're discussing a potential change in her duties and adding different description of what she does, and that is discussion of personnel.
I'm sorry, no. Michelle thinks that the, Sue thinks that the position now is an administrative position rather than a clerk position, so it isn't changing her duties, it's saying what we want to say in the ordinance, because our ordinance now says for a city clerk, it does not say for, that is my opinion.
And all due respect, that's your opinion, Sue has her opinion. The purpose of the closed meeting is to allow everyone to chime in and offer comment that may or may not fall upon what an existing employee is doing during their employment and how that may change, whether or not, we cannot pass an ordinance during a closed meeting.
So, now, I was going to bring up?
We cannot pass an ordinance.
In that effect, our decision is to do it or not to do it. If our decision is to do it, which requires an ordinance change?
That would, we're going to go back to open meeting.
Correct.
Open meeting, yes. I think the request is, is look at it, discuss it, compare what other cities are doing, and how it impacts her, you know, Michelle's, our current city's clerk, role, duties, and responsibilities, and then go from there to an open meeting to change the code, change the ordinance.
I personally would just be much more comfortable discuss, having this type of discussion in a closed and private environment rather than at-large, open in public. And as I see it, it does impact Michelle directly. It refers to what she does in her job, whether it's a title change, but it will also define the duties for which she is responsible. And I think that sort of discussion refers to an employee, and in this case, a specific employee, and I think under those parameters, it would be best done in a closed meeting environment.
So, do we need to vote on that, or?
No, it's posted.
Okay.
I had one other comment about the, I had asked for the job description for the building commissioner, code enforcer. building commissioner code enforcer. I know the job description for a building commissioner is in the ordinances already, but we don't have it really specific for the code enforcer. And I was wondering, is, and I also ask if they, the code enforcer would need a computer based on the job description. And so, I guess what we need is a job description for the code enforcer because do they need a computer? Are they sending out the letters? Are they keeping track of who has done the things and who hasn't?
Okay. Michelle, I, or, I'm sorry, Anora, I, I know you asked about the job description for a building inspector.
No, I said building inspector slash code enforcer.
I don't know-
Cause you were combining the two, if I'm correct.
Well, as we have done in the past, Jack has functioned as both-
Right, but I didn't know since we're changing-
Excuse me, Anora, excuse me for a second. Please allow me to finish my sentence. Jack has, in the past, functioned as both the building commissioner and the code inspector. I know we have a job description for a building inspector and I sent that to you yesterday. I honestly am unaware of a specific job description separate from building inspector for a code inspector. And you know the-
No, we don't have one. That's why I'm saying, has someone written one so when we hire someone, they know what is expected of them?
This would be part of the discussion that I'd like to have in the upcoming meeting. And that would facilitate identifying who would be the best candidate to fill this perhaps new role. Does that answer your question?
That answers my question. And I had said tonight because I am busy on Wednesday and Thursday, so therefore, I will not be there.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but we'll fill you in on all the discussions, so.
I, that's why I wanted to make my point as to what I needed.
No, good. And like I said yesterday, I know I sent that to you, but I checked with Michelle and honestly, you're a-
Well, the building commissioner, I already knew. I just didn't know the code enforcer, what you wanted.
You're more knowledgeable about the codes than certainly I am and most of it, so.
And I would just say, you know, some things we're looking at include possibly a person, possibly an outside company. We have been working on trying to clean up our code and put together a, and we did outline as to the processes of what the person would, position would be doing, how they would enforce the code. And I know in some of the draft agreements, we put into the agreements what we would expect that person to do, but I do not believe we drafted any change of the ordinance as to what our definition, what exactly, the new definition of the building commissioner and code enforcement, what, but if you look at our existing code, it's all sort of in there. And if we pass the policy as to how they do their job, we may or may not have to change the code. Cause there's a lot of information in the code as to what they do.
Right, right. It's just the manner in which it's done, that, anyway. Jeff, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. And I apologize, but I skipped over the mayoral update, which is my turn. We do have a planning and zoning request for review and I think, what's the date on that? The, the planning and zoning request?
Oh, there's no date set.
Okay. No date set on that yet, and that is for-
Board of Adjustment. We're looking at August fourteenth.
Okay. And then-
It's enforced hills.
Okay. And then, as Anora mentioned, we are considering a new code inspector and/or building inspector. We've had rumors that our current building inspector is considering retirement and we had a gentleman approach us who was aware of his consideration and offer to step into a part-time position. So, we are talking to him about functioning in that role. He seems to have some very good credentials. He has been a full-time building and code inspector for the last fifteen or sixteen years for the city of Creep Core and he wished to retire as well. And prior to that, he was also employed by Baldwin. So I, he's got about every known credential you can have to man as far as his licenses and seems knowledgeable. I did do some checking for this gentleman in particular and everyone I spoke with said he would be a perfect fit for us and he was really, really good. So, we're in the process of considering what we're gonna do, where we're gonna go next. Couple of, we, I would like to have more than one person to consider, but this gentleman seems like a real viable candidate. So, that's our next meeting, one of the, the next closed meeting. We wanna discuss some of that. And we need to define, as Anora said, we need to define their role. That's all I have. Mr. Attorney, would you care to make a report?
No, no, not, I have nothing new.
Okay.
I'll be answering questions as we go down the agenda.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have the subdivision and country club contractual agreement for police enforcement. We did amend ours a bit due to some concerns expressed by one of the HOA resident, one of the HOA members who was privy to the information prior to anyone else seeing it. So it's in a final form and I believe we can release that to everyone if we, yeah, I think we have to take a, we have to take a vote, vocal vote, so.
Is this the final paragraph?
Yes. Yes. Essentially, it says that the police can continue to issue citations and patrol the streets. There has been a lot of discussion about what this means if we consider developments that are newer, certainly than the city of Clarkson Valley. Anytime you enter into development on private property, there's a contract that the local police department and the owner of that property enter into to give them the authority to act on their behalf on their property. Clarkson Valley's never had that, so we would like to amend that to make sure that we give the police the authority that they need. And in doing so, it necessitates this contract. So, that's what we're talking about doing. So, I'd like to take a voice vote. Can I have eyes?
I have a question.
Sorry? Yes, ma'am.
What about the Masonic Lodge or Mercy, are those private or not?
I'm-
I believe they're all private.
Yeah. They would also-
They would all-
They would also be subject to the same contract.
I mean, there'll be like parking handicap, I don't know. Are there, is there speed limits in this parking lot?
On the parking lot itself, I am not aware of one.
Okay.
It'd probably fall into the model traffic code.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if that's been ever addressed by the city council here or-
Because when they leave, they're on state highway. You can, you can ride up if you're at a yield or turning the wrong way on both roads.
Right. We could ride the state statute violation.
If they do care some prudent, under state statute, you could ride at that, if they're doing sixty across the parking lot.
That's still seeing eye.
Yeah, that's still seeing eye under statute. I mean, the handicap enforcement could be the only one I can-
No, that's a gray area.
Yeah.
And Anora, to your point, that would also, the, is it the Church of Latter Day Saints?
Right.
Would also be required to-
If they want-
Embrace that, if they want police protection as well as the Elise Day, the Orthodox, yeah.
I mean, the police can enter premises in the parking lot to, for other state crimes. We are only talking about traffic, like stop signs, speeding and on smaller parking lots.
Criminal, wouldn't that include criminal activity?
Well, that's state statute, any criminal activity, yes.
Excuse me. So the police can go on the property, cause they park on the property to watch the traffic now?
Right.
Right.
And they can do that anyway without signing this?
Right, they can go on the property. It's just stopping, detaining, writing traffic violations without the property owner's consent.
What about the schools?
Schools would probably be subject to that as well.
I'm sure they would walk in that-
We already have, we already have contracts with the schools.
You already have a contract with Rockwood.
So they're a step ahead of us.
Yeah, so.
So that's another example. Other entities are doing this as well.
Right, within Clarkson Valley. So we're a little bit behind the eight ball. So we're just trying to update everything. It's been, you know, thirty-some odd years since we were incorporated. Things were different than they are now, so we're trying to be a little more current and observant of some of our vulnerabilities. This would assure the police that they have the ability to issue citations and that they would be enforceable in court rather than challenged by someone and then negated, so, or avoided.
So, and in summary, I recommend it. Tim Engemeyer, your city prosecutor is recommending it. And I know we can discuss with Bob Jones, special counsel, he recommended it as well. So.
Yeah, so.
Three attorneys are saying, you should probably do this.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, yes.
So, can we, can we get a motion made so we can have this discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me, excuse me, Telly, sorry.
We're discussing it, but we haven't, it's a motion made.
Would we like to make a formal motion to discuss?
To adopt.
Well, we haven't, we're still discussing.
Normally, normally the motion to adopt that precedes any debate about it.
I'm sorry.
She had a question as to whether, would you ask her a question?
I didn't, am I allowed now?
Why don't you do a motion first? Why don't we do a motion first?
You will be allowed, but we gotta get a motion on the table.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion to discuss this?
To adopt the-
To, to adopt the police, the contractual agreement for police enforcement. Is there a motion?
Do you make a motion?
I did.
You did.
Okay.
Did anyone make a motion to do this? Or there is no motion?
That is for a second, that is for a lack of motion.
Okay.
Seems like we need to. I mean, a motion to discuss.
Now we need a second?
Second.
Okay.
We have a second.
For now.
All in favor?
We're just discussing.
But do we have the, I, yes, we'll discuss, or is it just the first?
So the motion has been made to second.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, thank you. So, we can discuss, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Valerie, I understand you and the other trustees of Stills had some concerns. Have they been addressed in the modified contract?
I haven't seen a modified contract. So, I don't know. I mean, in regards to what was in the original, I think there was just one paragraph that actually addressed the police and the rest of it is what we don't agree with. We would agree with the police.
So you disagree with everything except one, disagree with everything except one paragraph?
Correct. Yeah, cause the rest of it didn't, had nothing to do with the police. The rest of it had to do with liability.
Should I have heard about?
The only thing, as far as what, how it reads now is the only thing, the subdivision is agreeing to two things. That the police can patrol your streets with your consent to enforce the law. And the second thing that we're asking that you agree to do is to have a policy of insurance for your, for liability and keep it in place. Only insuring yourself, no one else.
Like I said, I have not received the revise in the original.
So basically, I imagine the subdivision has insurance for common ground. We're always saying is keep that in place during the term of this agreement. You're not agreeing to indemnify anybody, you're not agreeing to identify the city. That's the only thing we're asking you to do and we're asking permission to have our police officers patrol your streets.
When did this get out?
It has not yet gone out.
Oh, you just, you got an advance copy?
She asked for, she asked, she asked for a copy.
Andrew.
Can you get this to them?
No, it, it, it was, we're still discussing.
It was a discussion on the-
It was on the agenda and she saw it on the agenda and asked for a copy. Isn't that what happened last month?
No, it was a couple months, it was a couple months ago, I think, Anora.
Right.
That was, that was my question. I have not seen this.
No, and it has not been distributed. The only reason that, that she got it was because she was at a meeting where it was on the agenda, it was mentioned, discussed, and she asked to see a copy as it currently stood. And this was probably eight, two, I don't know, a month and a half, two months ago.
Yes. And we've had at least seven iterations, so.
It, it has been thoroughly looked at, edited, vetted, and I think we're good with the way it currently reads.
So my question was, if we don't sign this contract, are we not gonna have police control or give us?
Well, one thing that this does at the advice, as Patrick mentioned, Patrick advises us that this is something that we should absolutely adopt. Tim Engemeyer, who is our prosecuting attorney, who works with Chesterfield, has also advised the same thing. And a gentleman by the name of Bob Jones, with whom we consulted to seek a second opinion regarding our ARPA funds distribution. All three of those gentlemen have recommended that we adopt this because one big issue is that it helps us define our streets and reduce any risk of discussion regarding our private versus public funds for private projects. So, it allows us to maintain our definition of quote quasi-public streets and it allows us to continue to do stuff like snow removal, which is questionable because again, that's public money that we're affording the subdivisions for private projects on private streets. With this kind of an agreement, we can substantially defend our quasi-public distribution of funds and continue the distribution to refund or to fund snow removal.
So this is gonna say that you're gonna maintain our streets?
No, it's not gonna maintain your streets.
No, we're not gonna do that.
No, good try, Telly.
So, if you don't agree to it, then you may or may not plow our streets.
We don't plow your streets.
Well, you get reimbursed.
You get reimbursed with private-
But you may or may not get reimbursed.
You get private funds for what is essentially maintenance of private property. With this kind of an agreement, you would be able to identify yourself as quasi-public and therefore defend, we would be able to thoroughly defend ourselves for distributing ARPA funds to you for whatever purposes you choose to apply them, streets, sidewalks, water runoff, and continue the snow removal reimbursement.
So this is justification for being able to give us ARPA funds for our street? Is that what we're doing?
No, it, all of it is tied all together. The foremost reason was so that when one of his officers pulls over someone for running a stop sign or speeding in the subdivision, they have jurisdiction to do that under the city code. There, there is case law that is supportive, there's case law that is not supportive, that the police have authority to do that on private street. If they pull over the wrong person without jurisdiction and say they're wanted on a warrant for something else, did they, did they have cause to take a man? We could be sued for basically unlawfully detaining someone or say he does, let's give him a ticket. Well, it's on private property. We're violating people's rights. You never had permission to do that. So we're trying to close that loophole to give them full authority and protect liability for the city and keep the streets safe. Well, we, for years, always have heard that we have private streets. Well, if they're private, why are the police patrolling? How do you keep the public out? We know the public are using them. Yes, you can enforce no trespassing if you know, if you tell someone not to come back, but there really are no limits of the public going in and out of these neighborhoods. But the problem is, your streets don't connect to other public streets. They deaden on private property. The cases that say the police have authority to manage traffic are usually private streets connecting one public street to another public street. And the majority of your streets deaden into the neighborhoods. So, we're, this is to protect the police not getting sued, the city not getting sued, and to make sure that they, we all feel comfortable. When we put a stop sign in your neighborhood, we'll, we'll enforce it. Or you wanna call, a certain car is going too fast, they're gonna go look for it and not give a warning, they will write a ticket or arrest them. But with that being said, with ARPA, you know, are they public streets or are they private? Well, if, if they're, the police are patrolling them, we have a contract where they can go on, you agree to allow them to force, you acknowledge the public is used, are using your private streets, that helps saying that we're spending ARPA funds on quasi-public streets. And it also ties in, well, they got the contract, we're improving it, using federal funds, oh, they are quasi-public and we have no concerns about spending city tax dollars on snow plowing. So all kinda ties together. It started for one reason, but then got connected to a second reason. reason, and now we're, a third reason that makes a very good reason why we would like to have this done. It solves three problems, if that makes sense.
How many tickets have we, have been issued for people speeding within our neighborhoods or running stop signs everywhere else?
Chris?
No, I don't even, I've never even heard of anyone ever get to speed, speed-
I've seen a couple of cars from time to time.
Quite often, like, for instance, this, this month, we wrote 15 new violations, and then most months between 15 and 25 new violations. And then there's a lot of other tickets that provide for expired plates and, and others on the major type violation. They've had insurance, they have financial responsibility that they have to take care of, things like that when they stop.
Are these actually in the neighborhood?
It could be, it's in the neighborhood, it's in, it's out in Clarkson, Curdwell, all around.
So...
But, but it's mostly on the major.
Right, that's why I think it'd be on Clarkson and then Curdwell.
Yeah. So, it would come into play if someone challenged one of those tickets?
Right.
Or challenged our use of quote-unquote "public" funds on private projects.
So, are you going to say that then this agreement is contingent, uh, the ARPA is contingent upon this agreement? Is that what you're telling us?
I don't think we've had that discussion. I mean, we've, you and I have talked, discussed many things, but I think the board has crossed, because first, you want to see who is going to sign it and who is not going to sign it. And I believe you're going to have a cover letter that is sent out with it.
Yes, and the cover letter will say pretty much, will speak pretty much to what I just said.
So, can someone give you an answer to my question?
Well, at this point, um, the attorney to my right, the attorney we sought for second opinion, strongly recommend that we adopt a contract like this in order to assure ourselves that we are not taken to task or have to refund or pay fines, any public monies that we've used on private projects. So, this, this will protect us from that.
So, do we have a attorney that we want to look at it as well?
Please.
Please, we're not set with them, absolutely.
But I, I still want to be able to communicate back to the trustees that our snow reimbursement, ARPA, anything else, is contingent upon signature of this contract. That's my nuclear deal.
Specifically, the ARPA distribution, we have not specifically discussed, um, but I suppose it is part and parcel of this discussion.
And the thing about the ARPA money is federal money, and we've fully examined the guidelines for ARPA, and we felt your streets, as they're being used currently, qualified for the federal funds.
The ARPA was, thanks, Patrick, ARPA is a little different because it is federal funds.
The snowplow comes into the restrictions in the Missouri Constitution, Article 23, about giving away private, I mean, public funds to private persons, entities, properties. That is state law restrictions, which is a very strict rule. So, what we're saying is, I don't think ARPA funds are going to be restricted in any way. That train has left the station. But it also helps getting this contract in place to justify, yes, why we allowed ARPA to be used on, on these streets. But when, you know, the fall, winter comes, we are going to have to look closely at who has contracts, who doesn't, and what does that mean under state law, not under the federal ARPA guidelines.
And when we talked to the attorney with Curtis Hines, a gentleman by the name of Bob Jones, uh, one of the things he said was, there have been audits, there have been, um, those who have been required to pay back monies and fines and interest because they spent their money inappropriately. So, that was one of the reasons we sought a second opinion from him about this, and he was able to help us define parameters which allow these monies to be federally distributed funds for private projects. But, again, one of the things he recommended was that we have a specific contract with the police. And Lynn, you were there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
He recommended that.
So.
So, I mean, the way the contract is awarded at this point in time, the only thing any trustee, board of trustees have to do is, A, agree to allow the police to patrol the streets and keep your existing insurance in place. We're not asking-
But there's more in this.
Well, but Val, to, to your point, it, it does touch on things like a speed limit, but all the speed limits in this, in the subdivision are 25 miles an hour, they're already in place. This is not going to change any of that. Uh, it, it says that we will continue to provide street signage, et cetera. That's not going to change anything. It really essentially just boils down to the fact that you are entering into a contractual agreement with the police to allow them to patrol your streets.
And as we said, your attorney is free to look at it, we'll happily discuss, um, but by, in my opinion, I don't see where you're doing anything differently than what you're doing now, except for formalizing the relationship.
Do you want to move on to voting to adopt this or not? We could probably talk about this.
I, I would, can we vote to adopt it now?
Yeah, did you just call for the vote?
Yeah.
I don't know if I can.
Yes.
If I support it.
Yep.
Okay.
I would like, um, a motion to adopt. Can we do that?
The motion has been made.
And seconded, so I think we need a vote. I would like to call for a roll vote. Okay. Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
There you go, voted and passed. Thank you.
Do you have time line for when we're going to send it out?
Um, I think we're ready, aren't we? We're about ready, we're ready to send it out, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that, the letter came in everyone's packet that will go to the trustees, any, were there any comments for those? It's not in our packet tonight, sorry.
That's okay.
But were there any?
It looked good.
Yeah.
It was just a nice cover letter.
Yeah, it just explains pretty much what we've all discussed.
You might want to leave out "most prestigious" because I don't know who calls them the most prestigious, you know?
Well, that's the way they've been referred to, but I, okay, we can take that out.
I don't know who refers them to that, you know, I, I just wanted to know-
It might be Mr. Curtis, I don't know. Or Mr. Hines.
I think it's Kevin O'Keefe myself, but.
Yeah.
Thanks, Anora, we will edit accordingly.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, let's see, some provisions, um, Bill 0528, we have been remiss in passing a video franchise fee change. This is something that should have been passed probably six, seven years ago. Even Scott, prior to his, um, the end of his term, said, yeah, I should have done this. This is just, um, a fee change that will allow the tax fees that the city, the revenue the city gets from the video franchise vendors, if you will, to gradually decrease over the next few years by, is it half a percent every year?
Right.
And, um, we don't really have a whole lot of choice in this, it's something that we just need to sign and, and move on.
Yeah, essentially, what we're doing is, we should have changed it to comply with state law five, six, seven years ago, um, to collect additional fees. Now, they passed another statute to, for everyone, every city, to start scaling back how much we can charge. So, the language, the new language is exactly from the state statute. We're just, this is a simple ordinance to get into compliance with a change in the state law in order to continue to collect the money.
Did the fee change, or is that the same?
The fee, the fee is changing August 28th, it's going down.
It will begin to decrease by, I think, a half a percent?
Half percent for every year for the next five years.
And it'll end up at two and a half percent going forward after 2027.
So, can I have a motion to?
Motion to approve Bill Number 528.
Thank you.
I second it.
All in favor? I guess we have a roll call, we have to call the roll on this one.
We do, yes.
Sorry. Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, thank you, that passes. Uh, new business, moving on to new business, we have a new potential member for planning and zoning and board of adjustment, a gentleman moved into Clarkson Valley, I guess, uh, there's a, is his bio in here?
It is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, he hasn't lived here too long, I ran into him when we were, during the campaign. Um, he's, I, seems like a really nice guy. I know, I think Andrew and Brock have had the opportunity to meet with him. He is an IT, IT guy, um, very knowledgeable, and when I talked to him initially, he said he was very interested in getting involved in city government. So, he was approached about, or actually, he contacted us to see if he could serve in some capacity, and he was very excited to volunteer for this position. So, um, essentially, I just need a, and one other, do we have to do a separate? Yes, we do. So, I would like a motion to nominate David Grable for the Board of Adjustment Planning and Zoning, please. Do I hear a motion?
Does it want to move?
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, voice vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Thank you. We will tell Mr. Grable he is welcome to join us, and I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight.
Oh, he is here.
He is here.
Oh, David, geez, you are. I didn't recognize you without your hat, sorry. Would you like to stand and address yourself, please? Address to, yourself and address to the board?
Yeah, so, my name's David Grable, I've been here about, uh, six months now. I did grow up near here, um, and then I went into the military, I was part of joint special forces operations in Afghanistan for a while, then I was European Command, then I was Iraq and Africa as well. And now I run a cybersecurity division for threat intelligence, threat hunting, and incident response with law enforcement and other government agencies. And so, now I'm looking to volunteer in the city where I can and help out.
And we're looking forward to any advice you can give on, in any capacity, including to Brock and Andrew, but they're very qualified in and of their own, but more is always good. So, thank you very much for volunteering, and my, pardon me for not recognizing you. Like I said, last time, you had a hat on, and it was really cold, and I had a coat on.
Yeah, coming here when it was cold, I was adjusting from Phoenix, so I was, I was wearing a snowsuit.
Well, it's a little warmer right now, so, anyway, so, well, welcome, and thank you again. Okay, then we have, um, 0529, water runoff.
Do we want to discuss?
I'm sorry, we need to discuss, yes, thank you.
Why don't you put her down at G?
Oh, sorry, to G.
Welcome back to her, you guys put her down at G.
Oh, Kim Cosman, yes, she's the last one. So, um, we need to discuss and perhaps pass the water runoff, um, bill of limiting the distance from which the street or paved surfaces water can be dumped, sir.
Do we need to do the article review later?
We've dropped that to item G, as in golf.
Okay.
And we will, yes, thanks, Lynn. Um, so, does anyone want to make a motion to discuss?
I make a motion, we discuss ordinance 0529.
My second.
Thank you, moved and seconded, so we may discuss.
Um, I just have one question on the third paragraph, it says, "without prior permission from the building commissioner." Is that going to be a problem, that the building commissioner can tell them that they can put it on the street?
Well, I think most of the cities that I've read indicate that there is a, a 10-foot minimum, a 10-foot setback required for drainage so that it doesn't hit streets and cause-
Right, I don't have a problem with that, I have a problem with that last statement saying that the building commissioner can say they can put it on the street, or it doesn't have to be 10-foot.
Well, what I've seen from other cities is sometimes on certain projects, for instance, they get permission from the city if they have like a, they get basement floods, and you got to pump and run it out. Sometimes you get permission to run your pump straight out of the street to get the water out of the basement, or special building situations, not a permanent, um, I think that was in there when I went, you know, I looked at it and made a few phone calls, like, oh, temporary situations, like, you know, you don't have sod, you don't have grass in yet.
Can we?
But you got your lines in, so you're basically washing away your yard until your sod comes, your house is completed, you know, in November, you don't, or February.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking this looks like it's a permanent thing, so maybe a temporary, can do it temporarily?
We could change that if, you know, without any prior temporary permission from the, if you add the word temporary in there.
Yeah, temporary easement or adjustment?
Temporary permission, yeah.
Yeah, I, Anora, I'd be good with that, I think that's a good point.
I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, I don't want to give the-
Because why pass a code if someone can come along and negate it? Ah, it's okay, don't worry about it.
Never mind.
So, okay, do we need to?
Amend it.
Amend that, please? Do we need to vote on amendment, on amending the proposed ordinance before?
It probably should, if, right, right, Patrick should?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, do I hear a motion to amend?
What, I'm sorry, what is the amendment?
I think to add the word temporary on page one, I mean, the words prior and permission, have it read prior temporary permission, so it did not become a permanent installation. If that sounds okay, I'm just kind of doing it on the fly.
Where are you on page one?
Uh, the last sentence.
Last paragraph, last sentence.
Last paragraph, last.
Without prior permission, and it's going to say without prior temporary permission.
Okay, all right. While we're in that paragraph, the first line, it's a sump, not a sump pump.
That was corrected also, that's in our packet, correction.
I'm working, I'm working, I'm adding information here.
Thank you, Lynn, Lynn caught that too. Yeah, spell check doesn't correct that, it's, yeah.
So, we move-
Is this, one other question, this, this is in line with the county?
Well, our instance is consistent with the city, the county plumbing code.
Yeah.
And many other jurisdictions around us have this similar language.
If you look at the, um, the digital access, the online access to the Ecode 360, you can, there's city after city after city that says, must be 10 feet setback for water discharge, and that includes swimming pools and, you know, as you said, sump pumps and draining your basement, et cetera, so, um, that gives an opportunity for dispersal. So, we've, do we have a motion to accept as amended?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend?
Accept as amended. Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? Well, I guess we have the roll call, roll call, roll call, sorry, sorry.
Passing it as amended.
Passing, yeah, passing as amended, thank you.
Okay, um, that would be Lynn Majet?
Yes.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Greg Bogosian?
Yes.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
Vote is passed and adopted. Do I get to hit the gavel for that?
Yes.
Oh, boy. All right, uh, last, next one is discuss and pass Bill 0530. This is the conflict of interest requirement that we're all required to sign when we go on fi, when we file, after we're elected, right? It's not when you file for election.
It is filed.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it depends whether you have a local ordinance which you pass every two years, you don't have to send in all the forms to the MEC if you have a local ordinance, it saves you all the burden of sending the paperwork to Jeff City, you bypass it and just can skip over it.
Well, we had to, we're now looking at having to fill out the long form because we've exceeded the previous limit of 1 million, right?
Correct, unless you pass this.
Unless you pass this.
Unless we pass this.
Yes, if you have a budget over 1 million dollars, you got to pass this every two years.
And so, we are at that point, and it's, I've- And so, we are at that point, and it's, I, I really like filling out the short form rather than the long form.
Yes, yes.
Um, so, I am asking for a motion to discuss and pass this. Do I hear a motion?
Um, under that we adopt Bill Number 0520.
Second.
Motion has been pa, has been made and seconded, so, okay, thank you.
All right. An ordinance of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Second reading?
Discussion.
Or, I'm sorry, discussion. Anybody need to discuss?
An ordinance of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Any additional discussion? Will you, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor, thank you. Okay, for Bill Number 0530, Andrew Lowe.
Yes.
Anora Schiller.
Yes.
Jeff Schwag.
Yes.
Brock McDonald.
Yes.
Greg Bagosian.
Yes.
And Lynn Midjet.
Yes.
0530 has been voted and passed. Thank you. Okay, then we have three resolutions regarding ARPA proposals. Um, the first one is Clarkson Mills Circle. Do I hear any motion for, do we motion for discussion? Vote, we can verbally vote on this, right?
A motion that we approve, Resolution 23 dash 05.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Discussion.
Or, or do we need to discuss? Yeah.
Opportunity to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think these are...
Just a little background, I guess, this is the, out of the three we're looking at tonight, this is the only one where they ask for more money than the number of houses in their neighborhood would afford them. So, they sent us in a request for 6,200, whereas they only had about 6,100 and change available to them.
So, the ordinance says what we offered them?
Uh, the resolution says how much we're going to be willing to give them, which is less than what they're asking for.
I thought it was at the top of the high, high range.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was at the top of the high end of the range, 6,200.
Well, maybe after, Michelle gave me some numbers for what we're, we still have to spend on computers and whatnot. And it was, it came in just shy, a couple hundred dollars shy of the top end of the high range. Yes.
Okay, so what is the top, okay, I don't have that number.
Yeah, I believe the high end of the range was 61.
Okay.
I believe.
And there's 62.
They're at 60, they're asking for 62, yes. The exact dollar amount is $6,113.
And 26 cents.
And 26 cents. Thank you.
I'm not quibbling over that. Well, I put all the numbers that you sent out into a spreadsheet and, um, I'm sitting here looking at it with you. The high end of the budget is for 490,000, and we have requests now for 1.08 million.
Yes, and one of those, one request is for half a million.
Well, close.
Just sure, just, just shy of half a million.
Jump in.
Almost a whole million.
Yeah, 96.
So, we will have, we will have discussions.
Well, yeah, the resolution that we'll pass when they send us some information, they sent us a, just a raw number, $465,000, with no bids, no other information.
All the other required information was not part of this, which is why it's not being reviewed tonight.
When the time comes for that, the resolution will be, well, it'll, it'll be like, whereas they requested 465,000, therefore, we are approving 100 and whatever, you know, would apply to that particular neighborhood at that time. If it followed the same pattern that we did with this, these resolutions.
Right, right.
No, yeah, I know, we'll get to it in the future. I'm just saying, I'm looking for a hundred dollar...
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'm with you on that, Greg. All right.
Okay, so, uh, can we vote on this? Can I hear motion, vote? A doubt? Okay.
We ready to vote?
Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays?
I still have a problem with giving out money that isn't for safety. And I think the dam, which is the half million or whatever, uh, probably needed more. And I, you know, I don't want to take it away from the, I know that we voted, we didn't really vote. You, it was tied and you did the tie, the fact that we were going to do it by, um, the number of houses. But I'm also wondering if we shouldn't have done it by safety. And so, that's why I hate giving that amount. So, that's the only reason why, yeah.
So, is your vote...
My vote was no.
A no, okay. All right. Um, I believe the ayes have it. So, Clarkson Mills Resolution for their ARPA proposal has been voted and passed, with Anora's vote noted. Next would be the Manners at Clarkson Valley. Gee, I wonder who that might be? Can we have a motion to discuss and/or accept?
Uh, the aye motion, we approve Resolution 23 dash 06. Sorry, I didn't want to make it from my own subdivision.
A second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Can I have an oral vote, please? Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
Um, no, for the same reason.
Okay.
Did you vote? Or are you abstaining?
He's abstaining.
Can you explain to the audience, if you don't mind, why you're voting on these three but not the others? I think there's a good reason, I'm just...
We have, we've received a number of requests from, we've received requests from everyone on, based on the deadline provided, which was Saturday. And these three are the only submissions that we've gotten that have all of the required information, including insurance, bids, et cetera. So, as soon as we get that remaining information from the other submitters, other HOAs, we will include those and vote on those as well. So, just, I guess I just need some clarity, because I thought there was two phases. So, we submit, and I thought that is, it was supposed to be agreed upon, and then we will have it finished. Correct. Right? It's just that these, these have come in complete. But, it is, so am I, do I wait for something from you all to finish phase two of that application? Or do I do it and just submit it and hope that they all...
Can I?
Yes, please. Were agreed on. I thought you all were supposed to agree on the projects first.
Yeah, so the initial, the preliminary approval, which is referenced in the letter we sent out, that's something that City Hall would just send back to, is not something we have to vote on. The first preliminary approval is just saying, yes, what you're proposing that you do is in line with Resolution 23 dash 03. Now, go get bids, fill out an application, and send all.
And what is that, and what is that type of...
So, you have to send us a complete package within...
No.
Oh, the first one. The preliminary one, so within, we sent you an original letter back in the middle of June. You had forty, up to 45 days to give us your high-level idea of what projects you want.
Everything was submitted on, like, on Saturday.
Yeah, but your neighborhood, you, you were good. You submitted a whole application. You didn't just send us a note saying, "We'd like to work on roads."
No, no, it's just that first.
But, yeah, you didn't just send us an email saying, "We'd like to work on roads." That's all you technically had to send us, but you sent us a lot more, which was, which was great. And what we'll do is we'll respond saying, "Just so you know, here are the few items that you still need to send us to complete that package. And you have 60 days to complete your package."
So, when will we do that?
Uh, in the next, in the next couple of days.
Yeah, we can send that immediately. Okay, so he doesn't have to go to vote for that committee? No.
No, no.
And, and I can say, um, I think, pretty sure, everyone who has submitted an application has done so with, concerning a project that would be within the parameters that we feel would be acceptable. Has anybody?
That's right.
Are you guys aware of anyone who has sent in anything that's not appropriate or unacceptable?
No, they were all, vast majority was about, I guess, by dollars.
Streets, roads.
Fifty percent of the projects were for roads, and one project was...
Watershed.
For...
We had wired on ours too.
Oh, you, oh, that's right. You, you had multiples on yours. You're right. Yeah. Yes, right.
Yeah, but even those, everything on your, um, on your request for fine.
I'm confused, because I submitted mine, and I received an email back saying the amount I asked for was way too much, but that was the only issue with my form.
Right.
So, I haven't heard any...
Well, that's what we're talking about. We have not sent out those emails and, or letters. Do we have to send out hard letters for that? Or can we send out...
Well, she's saying you, she already received.
Well, she, she received, Tally, who did, who did you get that letter from?
I received an email from Michelle saying that this was the maximum amount of money we would get.
Oh, this, yeah, yeah, that one's everybody.
And then I, there was a form attached, and so I asked her, "Do I have to re-submit this whole form?" She said, "No, they're fine." But I have not heard what's...
That's what we're just saying. That will go out to everybody here in the next day.
Okay. And then the other thing I was just going to point out to you is on this form, you have Resolution 2305 for two of these, so I don't count those either.
It should be 2303.
Should be 06, and the second one 07, and the third one.
Only on the agenda? Yeah, that's, yeah.
Good, Tally, Kat. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it's Clarkson Mill is 05.
You've already approached 2305, which is two of these, so technically you've approved two of them.
No, but the actual resolution...
We're still, we're, we're, we're still working on the manners. We haven't approved it yet.
All, all the actual resolutions are numbered correctly. It's only the agenda that is incorrect.
Oops, sorry. So, um, Mary Swearingen. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, Mary.
I don't want to be the cause of, oh, well, you didn't submit whatever it is. So...
We can, we can talk more at the end, too. If you, if you're going to be here at the end, I'll, I'll be here for a while, so, but you're good with what we've got from you so far.
Mary, you...
Just curious, have you heard from Clarkson Farm?
Oh, yes.
Everyone has submitted, the deadline was 29 July, and everyone has submitted a request. It's just the only thing we're waiting for on some of the other, on the remaining subdivisions are the remaining requirements of, have you gotten three bids? Do they have insurance, et cetera, et cetera. And those were, those, that criteria was all detailed in the letter that went out initially. So...
They submitted it for streets, roads.
They did, yeah.
Yeah.
Clarkson Farms did.
Ours were just sealed. I'm assuming that was for that.
Yeah.
It, it is street sealed.
Okay. So, with that in mind, um...
Oh.
We'd...
I think, um, we voted on joint 306. But I just want the record to reflect, you know, Anora has voted no twice. Michelle, did you get?
And Andrew.
Abstain twice. Did you get that?
I got it, I got it eventually from Anora, but yeah.
Okay, because you did, you did abstain twice. So, I just want the record to reflect that.
Okay, so the Manners at Clarkson Farm is...
2306.
06. Okay, so then West Hampton is 2307?
Right.
Okay.
And the resolutions in the book are correctly numbered.
Okay. I just want to note them. Okay, so, do we vote on the manners or not yet?
We, yes.
We had four votes.
Okay, all right, good, okay, all right. And then 2307, which would be West Hampton's proposal.
And moved, except for Resolution 0530.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Voice votes, ayes, please?
No discussion.
Oh, do we need, I'm sorry, do we have discussion? Do you want discussion?
No, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's just...
Play.
Okay.
Always should ask.
I'm sorry, thank you. You're right. Uh, any, um, aye votes?
Aye.
Aye.
And nay votes?
Nay.
And one abstention?
Correct.
There you go. Okay, then Item G, which is not on your agenda as printed. It is relative to a young lady by the name of Kim Cosman, who lives in Dunhill. And she has offered to serve on the Architectural Review Board. She is an engineer by trade. She works for Bayer, and she's got clearance from them to do this. And she, I think, would be quite qualified. Her, um, brief bio is in your packet, um, how long she's worked for Bayer, et cetera. And I think she's got something in here about how long she's lived. Um, I don't think she has anything about how long she's lived here. I know she's on the Board of, the HOA Board for Dunhill. And the President of Dunhill's HOA is a woman by the name of Kathy Walker, and she speaks very highly of her.
She's not an architect, though.
Pardon me?
She's not an architect.
She's not an architect. She is a...
She's a civil engineer.
She's a civil engineer, yeah, civil, right.
This is exactly the type of person we would like to have on board.
Yes, yes. So, so, um, does anyone, I'd like to have a motion to discuss and/or approve? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve Kim for the Architectural Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passed and voted. Welcome, Kim. Um, the audit. Can we have a motion to consider, pass the audit as it currently stands? Is there any discussion? Or, well, let's have a motion first, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the audit.
Second?
Second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Well, sorry. Do we have any discussion? We use a note, so I don't know. Do we have any discussion? Sorry, Greg.
Thank you. Keep me in line.
Do we have any discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. No, no nays, so the motion passes. The res, audit is accepted. Okay, miscellaneous. Um, one of the things that we are going to consider is I need to have some volunteers for a committee to consider workman's comp. This is something that the city has never adopted. Um, again, on the advice of our attorney and many other attorneys, they express great dismay that we have never had this for any of our employees. So, in the event that someone working for the city, that would include a building inspector, um, Michelle, Andrea would be harmed in some way during the execution of their job, we are extremely vulnerable to lawsuits. So, I would like for a couple of folks to help take a look at this and see what policies are available and what they will cost us going forward. Is there anyone that would volunteer to do that? Lynn? Okay. Somebody else from, especially from Ward Two? No?
I, I can, yes, I can look into it with Lynn.
Thank you, Brock. And anyone from Ward One?
Quiet over there. I've done too many.
Was that a yes or a no, gentlemen?
That's a no from both of us.
Okay, so, the committee will be Lynn and Brock. Thank you.
Sure, it's all right, it's all right.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and we are not going to, at this time, have a closed meeting that will be tomorrow. So, where's Jim Meyer when you need him?
We got him in the spirit.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Moved and seconded, adjourn. Motion to adjourn, second, moved and seconded, adjourn.